Farley, Sunny and Drive is in the mid twenties and thirties. It's seven o'clock.
Take it out of your peril. Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, February 6th, and this is a Moscow City Council meeting. Art?
Would you rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, and to the great work of which stands one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. And before we get into the consent agenda, I just want to make one announcement. There will be no executive meeting tonight after the regular meeting is over with. Will you adjourn? We will adjourn. With that, I will go on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
John.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by John and a second by Catherine to accept the consent agenda as is. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, we will move on to the next thing, which is Staff Recognition Report by Gary Reeder. Gary, you had the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have no staff recognition report today. Everybody's been busy dealing with the weather, so I'm sure there'll be plenty of recognition the rest of the year. I would, however, like to take this opportunity to introduce the mayor and city council in the Moscow community to Adam Lincoln, the new Pullman City Supervisor. Adam's been on the job for about a month, so he's just getting to know our larger community. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please, we'd like to listen. That's a few words from you, Adam.
Well, thank you, sir, Mayor, Council. Just thank you for the opportunity to come out and introduce myself to you. Came from Lakewood, Washington, before moving to the Pullman area. I've got a twenty-month daughter and a wife that's been thankfully married to me for the last eleven years, so she's been willing to move around with me a little bit, and we're really happy to be here in the Palouse. And thanks to Gary to sit in on the interview panel. Without his help, I'm sure it would have been a little bit more of an uphill battle, but, you know, I really look forward to partnering with the city and making sure that there's that continued respect between the two entities. I think that's one of the biggest things that we have for a strength in our region is having the two cities work together on things like economic development and with the airport. So I don't have much planned to say, but thank you very much for having me tonight, and feel free to reach out if there's anything I can do. And Gary and I will continue to work together and make sure that we collaborate as much as possible.
Well, Adam, welcome to our City Hall. And one of the things that we've done over the last several years is we have a very good collaborative working effort with the city of Pullman. We go back and forth, have mixed council meetings here in Moscow as well as Pullman every other year, and it's part of the collaborative effort so that we can work together because even though we have a state line, we are the Palouse, we are a region. And what happens here, how hard we work together collectively, will make it a success for all of us, and so it's a big deal for me as the mayor, Adam, and I appreciate your comments. Counselors, would you have any words for Adam?
Good luck.
I would like to invite him down the receiving line so I can shake his hand. I haven't met him before, so once he's finished up there, maybe somebody else has got questions, but welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Actually, just to go a little bit further with what Bill said and what you talked about earlier, is that our new redefined and moved airport that we're working on now, we'll start again this spring, is a direct result of the collaboration between our mayor, the mayor of Pullman, Gary, and now you. And we're putting together $120 million airport expansion, and if it hadn't been for the work of all interested parties on both sides of the state line, it wouldn't happen. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Want to share one other thing here with everybody. And Adam's a nice, good, young-looking man here, and one of the things that I told him was that, you know, his skin's smooth, he's got lots of hair and no gray, and as time moves on, working in city government, it has a tendency to change how we all look. So there you have it, but we welcome you aboard and look forward to working with you, Adam.
Thank you.
So if you want to come up here and meet each one of these, this is Walter Steed, Councilor Walter Steed.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Yeah. Counselor Art, President Jim Boland, Vice President Kevin Bonzo, Senator Trusio, and Counselor John Weber.
Thank you.
And the city staff.
Thank you again, Adam. Okay, the next item of order is the mayoral appointments, and I have six appointments
this evening that I entertain counsel to approve. We have four positions for our Human Rights Commission, Heather Bingham. Term would expire 12/31/2018. Elizabeth Stevens, whose term would expire 12/31/2018. Jenna R. Singer, whose term would expire 12/31/2019. And Meredith Metzger, whose term would expire on 12/31/2019. Also, on Moscow Pathways Commission, we have Tanya Dennison, who's would her term would expire on 12/31/2017. And Clark Phillip on the Tree Commission, who would expire 12/31/2019. I would ask the councils for a motion on this.
We move approval of the slate.
I'll second.
Okay, we have got a motion by Art and a second by John to approve these six commission appointments. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Thank you. Do we have any of those new commissioners out in the audience? If we do, would you please stand up? Not to embarrass you, we'd just like to see who you are so that everybody gets a chance. One of the things I like to do is anytime we have, commissions are so very, very vital to our, for our city, that it's a big deal to me, and I really appreciate all the hard efforts and works that everybody that does, that works on the various commissions. We got a former commissioner here in Deb Reynolds, who was terrific for a number of years on planning and zoning. So with that, we really appreciate the work and efforts that all those commissioners do for us. Okay, with that, I will move on to the next thing, which is public comment period, mayor's response period, which is a fifteen-minute period that we run along, and I allow people to get up and state their name, and give them three minutes. As long as it's something that is not on our agenda this evening, or something that is before planning and zoning or a board of adjustments, you can sure tell us what's on your mind. So feel free to come up.
Mayor and city council members, my name is Kelly Moore. I live at 1025 South Logan. I'm here tonight because I'm angry. Not angry at you, but angry at the direction of this country. We have a president who does not understand the concept of the, quote, "separations of power" in his condemnation of a sitting federal judge who blocked his blatantly racist immigration order. It seems to me that Mr. Trump, as well as the governor of the state of Idaho, do not understand the Second Amendment, which states, quote, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of a religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." By saying Christians should have a right, or even a preference, to come to the United States and to the state of Idaho, they have both crossed the clear wall of separation between church and state. In reality, though, all politics are local, and you, as my mayor and city council, have the most impact on my life here in Moscow. I therefore respectfully petition you to declare Moscow as sanctuary city, and that you further send a letter to the members of the Idaho Legislature in opposition to House Bill 76, requiring our local police to be under the direction of a federal immigration official. In addition, if you cannot support Moscow as a sanctuary city, I would like to know the reasons why from each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
I reside at 1025 South Logan.
Would you pull the mic down, please? Thank you.
Is that better?
Kelly is a little taller than you are, Debbie, so.
He thinks he is.
Well, only in height, now. I mean, not in stature there, so.
I just totally agree with Kelly, but because I come at the world from a probably a more less factual-driven point of view, more of an emotional level than he does, what I want to say is, these are really scary times, and I can't, I can't even fathom what's at stake. It's so scary. So what I would like to do is encourage you to really pour your hearts and your conscience into making a decision about where our city stands. I'd like you to think very clearly and with a sense of what the decisions that are made today, whether it's in Moscow or anywhere, but Moscow, where you have some say, what's that going to mean to all of our futures? You're all really good people, so I would hope that you could really dig down and look at human decency and the kindness that's in you, and not be intimidated. Be courageous.
Thank you, Deb. You know, I want to make a comment on this, too, and I very much appreciate both you folks coming forward and talking about this. We are working on a resolution. The city of Moscow is, will be going before both the Public Works and Admin Committees next Monday, talking about this very thing. Look at if, you know, I tell people this all the time. My mom was a full Swede. Her parents came from Sweden, so I'm half Swede. My dad, I've got no clue, so I call myself half Swede and half Heinz 57. Point is, I was an immigrant somewhere along the bloodline from somewhere, and the only ones that I know that wouldn't be would be Native Americans. That's why I see it. So for, as far as immigrants are concerned, this city will always welcome them, and what we ask of anybody that would come to Moscow is we want you to be productive, work hard, and fit into part of our diverse community. It's as simple as that. And as far as local government's concerned, that's exactly one of the reasons I ran for mayor, to get a chance to make a difference in our community, as well as these counselors up here. And you are right, it's what we do at the local level that makes it, and some of the craziness that goes on above us, we have no control on. But one thing we can do is we can work as a community to make things happen for us, just like the comments I made earlier about working with those in Pullman to make our region the best we possibly can make it. Because if we're going to make it happen for us, it's going to be about us here in Moscow. We're not going to get help from somebody else, somewhere else. We've got to make it for ourselves. I totally believe that, and I think that the six counselors up here would agree with that. So more to come with that. Look towards it, and we will see which direction this takes us. So I'm looking for other folks that want to come up and speak, too, but I just had to share that with you. That's my feeling, folks. Anybody else would like to talk?
Mayor, if there's no one else, I'd like to recognize a group. Are you going to do that?
Yep, I'm going to take care of that. Walter, thank you very much, Counselor. See, I'd like to have, we got a group of scouts here with us, and I was not only a Cub Scout, I was a Lion Scout, as well as a Boy Scout, and so I'd like all the scouts that are in here, plus their leaders, to come up front and get a picture with me so we can get you kids and leaders on the camera with the mayor. It's one of my fun things to do, so come on up.
Mr. Mayor, while you're doing that, I'd like to comment that John Weber and I had an opportunity to go down and speak to them for about twenty or thirty minutes this afternoon before this meeting, and they had some very insightful questions about things, and we hope that we were able to explain to them a little bit about how this all works.
Hey, you boys, smile now. Hold that smile. One, two, three. Hold that smile. One, two. There we go. You get it?
And the camera doesn't work.
Which one is the Pinewood Derby champion?
Before they skip to ladies and gentlemen, these are going to be future leaders.
Which one's the Pinewood Derby champion?
Down the road. Isn't that great? Let's give them a round of applause.
That actually kind of gives me goosebumps, when there's a bunch of scouts and kids in here and looking forward, and you know what? It is, it is an interesting time in our country, I will say that, but you know what? It's also an exciting time in our country because there's some things we can do to move us forward, and that's how I see it. So with that, Gary, I'm going to move on to you on item number five with Sojourners and Steve Bonner.
Thank you, Your Honor. You all have before you a memorandum that was mailed out this afternoon regarding Sojourners Alliance, the status of their facility. Steve Bonner is here, the Executive Director of Sojourners Alliance, and as you recall, last summer, Sojourners was forced to shut down because of the loss of a federal grant that was critical to their continuing in operation. At that time, Mr. Bonner came before the committees and the council to request financial assistance in order to continue services. At that time, the council, Mr. Bonner put forth a budget of about $125,000 that he felt he needed in order to continue operations. The council, at that time, in the fiscal year 2016 budget year, committed $12,500 of non-prioritized projects funding in the legislative budget to assist in that effort. The challenge to Mr. Bonner was upon proof that he had secured the additional $112,500 that he needed to stay open, the council would then authorize dispersment of the $12,500 from Legislative Reserve. The memo that you got this afternoon and an accounting of those other sources of funding, as well as a letter from Steve, came through. He's here tonight to request a chance to speak to you again. I would note, as a budgetary matter, that the council approved that $12,500 out of the fiscal year 2016 budget. It was not accessed during the fiscal year 2016, so there was $25,000 also in the 2017 legislative budget, and should the council approve that tonight, that is where that funding would come from, leaving an active balance of $12,500 remaining in that budget for the balance of the fiscal year. So with that, with your permission, I'll invite Mr. Bonner forward.
Before Steve gets talking here, he's a modest guy, and I want to brag a little bit on him, because he'll never say this, but I'm going to. This doesn't really have what he's doing here tonight and requesting, but I had the honor of being at the Martin Luther King Breakfast, and Counselor Bonzo was there as well, and you were there, too, Art, as well. Counselor Becky, and the thing of it, the point that I want to make here is that Steve was a recipient of this year's award for the Martin Luther King Award, and I'd like everybody here to give him a round of applause for that. The reason Steve won that award is because of his years and years of hard efforts and work, and I don't know how this man's been able to do that, but anyway, it was pretty neat. I got a chance to sit right behind him when this came up, and I was pretty proud. And with that, Steve, I'll let you go on. I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Thank you. You know, if you'd taken bets back in June when I came before you, whether I'd be back here to ask for the funds you committed to us, I would have bet against that. And there's been a lot of coverage, of course, but I really want to thank you all, mayor and city council members, for your belief in our organization and our community. Our community really stepped up. They really buy their voice through the donations, really made real clear the perception of our place in our community. And it certainly has been a roller coaster. There's times where I didn't, HUD's rules were being flung at me, and there was times it didn't look like we were going to make it. In fact, I had a flag pop up two weeks ago informing me that the method I was going to take folks in, I would be facing fair housing discrimination. And so I had to work around that, where we're not taking anybody directly from jails and prisons as I thought it was allowed to, so anybody that is coming out of an institution will have to be literally homeless for at least one day in order for us to take them. With Walter, you had made a statement back then about, was I, a question about would I get the apartment fixed that was damaged? This is a wonderful story. This epitomizes everything. A person in our community calls up and says, "I just sent you $25,000." It's like, and he goes, "Now, don't you have a damaged apartment?" I said, "Yeah, tell me a little bit about it." So I did. He goes, "Well, don't you have a water line that's damaged, too?" And I said, "Well, yeah, and how much would it take to fix?" "Well, why don't you keep that $25,000 for repairs, and I'll send you another $25,000 to help you along?" It's like, $50,000, just like that. And then our major fundraising event in December, the Avenues for Hope, we nearly doubled the amount we took in from the previous year. We went from $20,000 to almost $40,000. So all said and done, even after I've met with Jen to give the updates, we've received, Gritman committed to $5,000 a year to us, had another anonymous donation of $5,000, so the money's still pouring in. So all said and done, in the month of December, we raised $121,000 PayPal, so about $130,000 in December, and since then, we've still had another about $20,000 come in. So I've been asked, do we have the commitments obligations to go forward for longevity? My answer is, yes, we do. And so I'm here to say we're back on track. We actually have five people on site right now, and the story in the Lewiston Tribune, I don't know if you read it, but the day, Monday of the 30th, a fellow comes in and asks, "We can put them up for nine?" I said, "You know, we don't do that. Where are you headed to? Spokane." "Well, what's in Spokane?" "Union Gospel Mission." "What's your plans there?" "I want to go for 90 days." Well, I said, "I've got an opening here." And the person had taken two days to hitchhike from Kami I and was trying to get to Spokane for a program, so we were able to take that person in the very next day. And so our services are back up and running. I have a new case manager that is just top-notch, and I, let's see, I've been meeting with lots of folks lately, so, but it's going real well. And again, I really thank your support. I thank the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission and our support and all the staff, et cetera. So it is a miracle to be here, and I was an immigrant when I came to Moscow in '74. I came from San Francisco. So any questions for me?
Counselor, I have questions for Steve.
Just a congratulatory note, Steve. The work that you've done, oh, that Bill already spoke about, and then the fact that the people of the community have stepped up, I think that's in large part of the work you've done and to the type of community that we have here. So congratulations to you.
Well, thank you.
Steve, after the damaged apartment that you were talking about, that's the one that was done with the pet?
Yes, yes.
Are you still allowing pets?
If they're prescribed, I have to, actually. And we have things in place. My, with tenants, their rights are a little bit different, where I would, I intend after this learning process to give monthly notices for inspection to ensure that it doesn't happen again.
Doesn't get out of hand?
Correct, yes. That's the best I can do on that matter, so. $22,000 is what it costs to repair it.
And you are absolutely right, too, Steve. There is a certain criteria that falls with service animals for everybody, businesses and so on and so forth. Gina?
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Your Honor, I would like to move that we release the $12,500 to Sojourners Alliance. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Anybody else want to, Walter?
Question for Gary, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Gary, you commented that the $12.5 was originally allocated out of the 2016 budget?
Yes.
Is there not a way for us to reach back and use that money and leave the 2017 legislative budget intact at $25,000?
No, sir, there's not. We close the doors.
It was arbitrary, let me finish. It was arbitrarily or customarily moved to capital projects when it wasn't, when the Legislative Reserve wasn't used last year?
Any funds that are unanticipated fund balance carryover are allocated to the capital funds, yes. Counsel could direct that I move that back out of the capital funds. Of course, you can do that in this year's budget if you like. It's really up to you.
I'd like to make an amended motion, Mr. Mayor, that we do approve the $12.5 to Sojourners Alliance and direct staff to move the $12.5 back from 2017 to 2016, whatever accounting is required in order to.
Well, you can move it back to 2016. You have to move it within.
Move it out of capital projects into Legislative Reserve, thus making Legislative Reserve 37.5.
I would prefer that, if I may, I would prefer, since it's a budgetary item and an accounting item, that you make that known to the mayor, and the mayor can make that happen.
Then I would amend, if I may restate my motion, I amend the motion to remit the money, $12,500, to Sojourners, and in addition, direct the mayor to move the money back out of capital projects into Legislative Reserve.
Second again.
I, a question, is that a, are we requesting the mayor does that, or are we directing the mayor? I heard two different things.
I caught on the verb, too.
My motion was direct.
It is a bookkeeping matter, and you're not allowed to direct the mayor. It's a separation of powers, but.
And the reason for that is I got to be careful with the purse strings. They don't just let me write checks, folks. That's what the deal is.
I think we can get to where you want to be. You want to make sure that you retain the $25,000 Legislative Reserve for this year?
Correct.
Okay. The general fund is our, as our general fund of the city, you could elect just to overrun that line item, should you have other needs that you would use that $25 for. We could just overrun it by $12.5, is how I'd prefer to do it. It still makes it available.
Then I guess my motion died, well, it did have a second, so we're all going to have to vote on it.
Well, you better, you can renege on it, you and the second as well, and say, "I want to change the..."
Withdraw your motion.
Yep, withdraw your motions, like I do.
Is it withdraw or renege?
No, you can withdraw, whatever, Walter. Sorry, folks.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion if it's okay with the second.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. We're back to Gina's motion.
Okay, so we're back to Gina's motion, which is to approve the $12,500, and it's seconded by Catherine, and we will do it, Gary, and we'll make it happen out of the general fund. We'll start the roll, John.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we will leave the $25,000 in the legislative round of it, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Congratulations again on your.
We were not in jeopardy, Steve. We were just trying to do a little internal bookkeeping.
And sometimes, folks, we create more work for ourselves as well in the process, but we will get it done. Thank you again, Steve. Okay, well, we will move on to item number six, is there fee resolution revision on sanitation and solid waste fee change by Tim Davis? And this, folks, was something that we did, and I'll remind counsel, this was something that we talked about in a special meeting last Monday and approved, but this is the next step to approve the fee resolution, as I understand it.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you this evening, we have the fee resolution revision for solid waste, and as the mayor mentioned last week, on January 30th, the Moscow City Council approved the 2016 sanitation rate study update findings and amended disposal agreements with Leitau County, the cities of Belleville, Derry, Genesee, Julieta, Kendrick, Potlatch, and Troy, which required a revision to the fee resolution reflecting those actions. The fee resolution essentially alters solid waste processing facility tipping fees for municipal solid waste, which will increase to $81 per ton, non-municipal solid waste, which will increase to $33.05 per ton, and mixed materials, which is a combination of both municipal. both municipal and non-municipal solid waste. Those will increase to $57.15 per ton. The rate revisions reflect a 4.4% increase, as was indicated in the 2016 sanitation rate study update findings. And this revision would become effective on the first day of March 2017. Questions?
Questions for Tim? John?
I would make a motion that we adopt the fee resolution revision that has been presented by the sanitation department through Tim Davis.
Second, that motion? Okay, we got a motion by John and a second by Jim to go ahead and approve the, and adopt the fee resolution revision for the sanitation and solid waste fee charter.
Question to Tim, if I may. There was one community that had not voted to make the fee increase the last time we heard. Has that happened?
The city of Genesee, I believe, is going to meet next Tuesday. I spoke with the mayor from Genesee after that meeting, and he asked if that would work, if they made their motion next Tuesday. And I said, "I think that's fine." Nothing's going to take effect until March 1st anyway, but he seemed to be leaning toward that action.
Would it be proper for you to let him know of our action tonight, once it happens?
I made him aware of that after last week's meeting, that it was going to happen.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start the roll. You, Walter?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Okay. Item number seven, request for assignment of Cardinal GS Stormwater Utility Study Agreement to Aspect Consulting. That was a mouthful, Les. Good evening.
Good evening.
Why explain to all this? This is exactly what I said.
I think you hit it right on, so I guess we'll take questions.
I tried to say it fast, but I couldn't screw it up, so...
So what is before you this evening is a, essentially a transfer of a contract. Back in the summer, we started a process of looking for a consultant to assist us in assessing the potential for the formation of a stormwater utility here in the city of Moscow. It's something that we envisioned that's probably in our future, and we needed some expert assistance, if you will, for folks that have done this before and could help us figure out what it might look like and the type of components that should be part of a utility if we indeed form one. So we went through the normal selection process, go out for requests for qualifications, review the statements of qualifications, selection process, and eventually end up with a contract for services. And in your packet this evening, you'll find on page 49, the master agreement for professional services. Now, this is the agreement that we're using on these types of projects now, where you have a master agreement and then a task order that is attached to it, and it could have multiple task orders depending on the type of work that you're doing. But this master agreement is used for most of our contracts of this nature anymore. Within that contract, actually on page 52, in paragraph number seven, is an item called assignment. And this has to do with the transfer of the contract from Cardinal, who's our original consultant, to someone else. What has happened is that Cardinal began the work and they got about, oh, 30% of the way through the project. And then the corporate headquarters of Cardinal decided they were going to take, make a change in their business model and were no longer going to be serving anybody other than the federal government as customers. So that caught us up in the midst of our project with them. We are not a federal entity. We are obviously a local entity. And so we fall outside of that realm of the type of customers we're going to continue serving. So really, what then came to pass was the need to address what to do next. And so that's what we're, we're looking at this evening. There were several options that were defined that we could pursue. One of those would be to essentially start over, terminate the contract with Cardinal, even though we're roughly a third of the way along, perhaps go back to the second place firm that was in the selection process back last summer, negotiate a new contract, pick up really at the 30% point, but also, you know, have to backtrack a bit and recover some ground that we already covered to ref, or to familiarize the new firm with information that we'd already gone through. So that's one option. The second option would be to continue with Cardinal, and they agreed to do this, but to then allow Cardinal to subcontract the services with another consultant by the name of Aspect Engineering, or Aspect Consulting, with the idea that Cardinal would just really then act as a pass-through. They would have a management role, direct interaction between us and the consultant being Cardinal, but then pass all that information through to Aspect and then pass the bills back and forth, if you will. Obviously, there likely would be some markup there because of administrative costs and financial handling fees. The reason they suggested that Aspect would be the consultant of choice for a subcontract is that all of their stormwater-related people that used to work for Cardinal, who were on our contract, picked up and went to Aspect Consulting. So all of the engineers and planners and folks that were actually doing our project en masse moved over to Aspect. And so they felt it was a good move to, in essence, follow the knowledge and the professional skill set that moved from Cardinal to Aspect and the people that we were working with on this project. So that was the, the second option would be to continue our contractual relationship with Cardinal, but through the use of a subconsultant in Aspect Consulting. The third option presented is a transfer of the contract. So essentially to assign the contract that was originally between the city and Cardinal, to reassign it to Aspect Consulting, so that Cardinal gets out of the middle of it, they go away, and then we just continue the project with Aspect Consulting, using the same individuals that we've been working with from day one. So that's where the assignability clause comes into play into our, in our initial contract. So staff has gone through this. We've taken a look at the statement of qualifications that was given to us by Aspect at our request so we could get an understanding of what their firm capability is, what it was in essence before this group of stormwater folks moved over there, and then, of course, what it is today with the addition of those individuals. We have found that they are a well-qualified firm, and they're certainly capable of continuing the type of work at a quality we believe that would be commensurate with what we were seeing from Cardinal, in particular because we're seeing the same people performing the work. But they have other folks on staff that are also well-qualified in the stormwater field and dealing with the kind of work that's involved here. So it's a good addition of services and capabilities beyond even what Cardinal had with this change. So with that, staff is recommending that we reassign, or allow the reassignment, I should say, of the contract from Cardinal to Aspect. And if you look at the language in the contract, essentially, it says that they are not allowed, Cardinal is not allowed to assign the contract to somebody else unless the city gives permission. So the document that is on page 83 addresses that assignment and assumption of the consulting services agreement and provides consent. So what it says in here is that the city consents to assignment of Cardinal's contract to Aspect Consulting. And staff recommends that we pursue that course of action. And with that, I'd try to answer any questions that you might have.
Jim, this was on Public Works Finance on the 23rd.
Yeah, we did go through this in some detail at Public Works Finance, and it seems to me that the assignment is the way to go, that staff recommends. It seems like the cleanest way. All the people will be familiar with it. Going back and starting over is going to be an expensive and time-consuming problem for us. So I think we should go ahead, and I would so move that we authorize staff to provide Cardinal GS express written consent for the assignment of the Cardinal GS Stormwater Utility Study Professional Services Agreement to Aspect Consulting per Section 7 of the executed master agreement for professional services.
I'll second.
I had a question.
Okay, Gina.
So you cited three alternatives to us just earlier. Is this the one that cuts Cardinal out of the middle, or is this keeping Cardinal in the line?
This takes Cardinal completely out of the picture.
Beautiful. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Walter had a question as well.
Yeah, and I want to apologize to staff that I didn't make a call this afternoon. I saw this on Saturday and forgot about it. A question, maybe not for Les, but for legal. In the proposed agreement to do, and I have no problem with what we're doing. I'm okay with it. In the agreement itself, however, on page 83, Rod of the packet, the fourth whereas on the first page. This says, "Whereas the consultant desires to consent to the city's assignment." The city is not assigning. Cardinal is assigning. I would suggest the following wording of the fourth whereas. Did it read, "Whereas consultant desires to assign its rights and obligations under the agreement to assignee and have assignee assume consultant's rights and obligations, et cetera, et cetera, under the agreement."
I had a, I got a question on that, because the earlier, the way I read that earlier part of the contract, which is on page 52, unless I'm mistaken, it says, it says that it expressly agreed and understood by the parties that the engineer shall not have the right to assign. So the way I read that, Cardinal does not have the right to assign or change anything. It is up to us if they bow out of it. Am I correct on that?
No, Your Honor.
Yes.
On the original, it says they didn't have the right to assign unless the city expressly agreed. So if the city agrees, then they can ask, we agree to allow them to assign.
Okay.
So, and this, this goes along with the argument that, or the discussion we had on paragraph A under the agreement, consenting, that would make more sense with what Walter's recommending.
Yeah, this has been changed from the original version we had at committee, because I had a similar question at that time, and Rod...
And we made, we made the change, and we did make that changes, but the whereas did not get changed.
And I don't know if the whereas was in there in the first place and I missed it or if I just see it now. But Mayor, if I, the way I read it, and Rod, I think, is agreeing, the original consultant can assign, but only with our agreement. And that's what we're attempting to do here.
And so basically, what you're recommending, and I think I would agree on the whereas, would strike consultant. So it'd be whereas city, insert city, desires to consent to, and we'd strike city there and insult consultant's assignment.
That'd be another way to do it.
Oh, it'd be, it seems to me like that'd be the easiest way to do it.
That's the cleanest.
Yeah, without, without doing a whole bunch of blah, blah, blah.
No, and that would be, that would fall in line with what the discussion was when we changed the body of the agreement.
Yeah, I'd be okay with it.
Okay. Let me read this motion. Jim made the motion, John seconded, to authorize staff to provide Cardinal GS express written consent for the assignment of Cardinal GS Stormwater Utility Study Professional Service Agreement to Aspect Consulting per Section 7 of the executed master agreement for professional services. We all good on it? I'll start with John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay. Thank you, Les. Now, we will move on to item number eight, which is Southgate Third Edition subdivision request for waiver of public improvements. Mike, how are you doing tonight?
Doing well, Mayor. How about yourself?
Good.
Mr. Mayor, council members, before you tonight, we have a waiver request from Mr. Mike Salisbury, the developer of Southgate Third Edition, for the waiver of a pedestrian path within that subdivision. So just to orient yourselves, Southgate Third Edition is outlined in red and sending your screen. You've got the White Avenue Roundabout here to the left of your screen, Notting Hill Drive. This is predominantly single-family residential development within Southgate Second Edition, Robinson Park Road. You can see here to the north part of your screen. Got area-city impact, so the city limits boundary is directly adjacent to the east of this property, and it predominantly contains rural residential with Lundquist Lane and Flomer to the east there. Looking at the original phasing plan of Southgate Third Edition, it was originally proposed to be developed in three phases. Developers started out with Phase 3 and is now moving on to Phase 1. So that'd be the extension of Granville to the east, as well as Castleford to the east as well, and Chelsea Court cul-de-sac. Looking at what was approved as part of those pedestrian pathways, there was four pedestrian pathways that were proposed within the original subdivision, which was approved in 2008. In 2015, the developer had submitted a waiver request to waive this, the pedestrian path outlined in red, your screen there. Also, part of the waiver was to construct the two pedestrian pathways that extend to the east out into the county, one here, as well as one here up to Lundquist. There was, the part of the waiver that concerned those two pedestrian paths was the timing of the construction of those, not necessarily waiving the pass. The developer was requesting to delay the construction of those paths until such time as the houses were built within the subdivision. And so the council had denied that part of the request, but they did approve the waiver of the pedestrian path that ended up going from Hampton Court down to Notting Hill Drive. And so when this originally was approved in 2008 and the conditions were imposed, there was some discussion about pedestrian pathways. And really, the intent of these pedestrian paths was to provide better access from the upper portions of the subdivision down to Milton Arthur Park, which is the park that's part of Southgate Third Edition in the northeast corner of your screen here. There was some discussion at the council level regarding the pathway just going straight down from Hampton Court down to Castleford. It was determined that there was most likely going to be a substantial number of stairs required as part of that pedestrian pathway, and it was relocated here to the west and subsequently waived by the council in 2015. And so the pedestrian pathway for the waiver tonight is outlined in blue. You can see it here in the center. Essentially goes from Castleford down to Chelsea Court, intended to provide better access, pedestrian access down to Milton Arthur Park. This was the engineered drawing plan view that was submitted by the developer. You can tell between lots six and seven, this is Castleford here. About 26 stairs go down, six feet wide, and then tapers into a five-foot-wide sidewalk that ends up connecting to the sidewalk in Chelsea Court. This happens to be another easement. There is no path over here. It's just here. This would be a side profile of the stairs and the pathway in question. Like I mentioned, about 50 feet long, 26 stairs going down to the other portion of the sidewalk. Contains a metal railing in the center of the stairwell. Did a little analysis as to the actual distance saved, taking this intersection here, which is probably a point that a lot of people would drive or walk to, to access the subdivision. So looking from the purple line here, walking along the sidewalks, ends up being about .2 miles if you were to take that same intersection and walk east on Castleford, end up going down the stairway. The pathway outlined in yellow here and accessing the park, it ends up being about .15 acres. So saves you about 250 feet from that intersection.
.15 miles.
Oh, acres.
.05 miles.
Sorry. Sorry. Excuse me. I meant miles. Sorry. So it saves you about 250 feet when you look at it that way. Wanted to point out, the Transportation Commission did review the request. That happened January 12th, and the commission recommended denial of the request. This was before Public Works Finance last week, and they recommended approval. And staff's recommendation is either to approve the waiver request, deny the request, or take such other action as deemed appropriate. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, Jim, this was heard on the 23rd, as was a previous thing.
Yeah, there was some discussion about, you know, the, the amount of steps that that saves someone going to Milton Arthur Park from the junction there where the pathway would go, and the amount of expense that, that we're imposing upon the developer in order to save a relatively small number of people a relatively short amount of distance. And Mr. Steed said that in his experience in his subdivision, the stairway that's there and the pedestrian path, it's used a lot, even though it doesn't go anyplace, but people use it for exercise. And, and I think... And, and I think, I felt that if you're doing things for exercise, why do you care about another five-hundredths of a mile in, in walking around? And it doesn't go to a school, it doesn't go to a place of employment, or a church, or anything like that, it just goes to a park. So, it would seem like it would take you probably about less than a minute to walk that extra, and it's more accessible to people in wheelchairs, handicapped people, to go around on the sidewalk. So it seemed like a, an unreasonable burden, or at least a reasonable exception, that we would say, that we would allow this exception. And I think two out of three of us agreed on that. John?
Yeah, I, I sat in on Public Works and Finance and came to the same conclusion that Jim did, that unfortunately, if there's no way that you can help people in wheelchairs on any of these, you know, it'd be quite a rodeo if you put in a flat piece of concrete and started them at the top and said, I hope you make it to the bottom in one piece. But as far as the exercise level, and as far as the, like Jim said, the amount of extra steps, I think that the extra cost does not really help with the amount of space, or the amount of foot traffic that you need to use to get there from one way or the other.
I have a question for Public Works and Finance. So, to me, thinking about kids, and that's a major intersection where the roundabout is, and kids are going to want to cut straight, and instead of taking them to the sidewalk and around, that's kind of who I think of going through that way. I agree with all of you on the, on the accessibility for the wheelchairs, but in terms of cutting through neighborhoods, you know, that's a possibility that it could be accessed more by kids, because when we look at all the houses that are going in there. I just wondered if that was considered, I don't know.
Address that, because all the people that are going to live in that neighborhood will have access from the, the street with the cul-de-sac on it.
Yeah.
Directly to the park.
Uh-huh.
So, people using that would be from the, another phase of the subdivision.
Uh-huh.
So, in order for them, there's a pretty small, and, and those would be the main users of that shortcut. So it's a relatively small number of people that are going to live in those dozen houses in that other phase of the construction thing, that would, that would be using that, and it would go through someone else's neighborhood that may prefer that people go around on the sidewalk rather than walking through their yard.
I'll take Walter and then Art.
Catherine, I couldn't totally hear what you were saying because you were turned away from me a little bit, but.
Sorry.
If you're talking about accessing, if you're talking about living on this cul-de-sac and wanting to go walk up to your neighbor's house up here, you're going to do this as opposed to going up the proposed stair and walkway. I was the, the no vote on the committee, because I have built two of these in town. One of them, I was a project manager and the city required a, a stairway. That one had a destination, it was from Shetland Court to the University of Idaho. Another one I built was, you know, from Panorama down to a wheat field, which is now Trinity Baptist Church. It was not known the church would be there, it was not known that Good Sam would be built back in that corner, but the city required, because of neighborhood access, that stairwell. And we built it. The latter one, I have used to, to go around the neighborhood, to walk around and, and so forth. I talked to Jim this morning about this a little bit, and moved a little bit toward his position, which is, it's not that far to get to the park. I could probably vote to do away with it, but I would, it would not be to give the developer a break. I mean, I, my consideration of the people that live in this area, and whether or not it would be beneficial to them. An additional question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, for staff. If this stairway and sidewalk are, if, if the council agrees to, to do away with them tonight as requested, what happens to the easement? Do we do away with it as well? Is it, or does it, does it just lay there forever?
Easement would still remain.
Why?
Yeah, right now, it has been platted as a public easement, and you'd have to do a vacation if you wanted to take care of it, um, take it away. And that wasn't requested, apparently, for this, at this time.
Okay, we're going to go to Art next. Art?
Yeah, on this one, I'm very much on the fence, because I'm not a great fan of cul-de-sacs for any number of reasons, coming down to parking, snow removal, and everything else. But given Moscow's topography, I can see more and more of them coming on. And as such, I don't think any waiver that may be given to a developer to avoid providing cut-throughs between cul-de-sacs and other destinations should be setting a precedent on anything. But in this case, it would seem that the distance saved, the access, given the steepness of those hills, probably is not going to be a major impact on the community if it doesn't go in. So, I can see getting rid of that cut-through, but hoping that people don't see this as any kind of a precedent-setting move to disallow cul-de-sac to other destination cut-throughs.
I will remind council that because an action would or would not happen tonight is not a precedent for anybody. I will go with Gina, I haven't heard Gina yet tonight on this.
Well, I have to say, thank you, sir. I am, I am concerned as well about neighborhood kids, and, and getting from that lower part of the division up to, or down to, down to the park, correct?
Correct.
Right. You know, I guess, though, honestly, whether or not there's a staircase there, if they find that to be the shortest route, they're going to take it anyway. You know, kids are kids. So, I, I think I'm leaning on the side of not allowing this to, to be, I, I would like to keep it. I would like to keep it.
I have another question.
Okay, Catherine?
My question has to do with the design, you know, they have the twenty-six steps and stuff. Is there, and, and then, and people were talking about wheelchair accessibility, does the easement ever allow for there to be a, a more gentle grading, or, you know, not a switchback?
Switchback.
Yeah. I mean, is there space for that, or is that a typical thing?
Not, not the way it's platted.
I mean, the way you look at it, it's just straight up.
You, you have a, essentially, a fifteen-foot-wide easement there, and it's centered on that fifteen feet, so, no.
And the code says only fifteen feet for the easement. That's all you have to do.
That's just what was platted at the time.
John, did you have another?
Well, the only other thing I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, is, is, you know, I'll go back and say, yeah, the number of steps is a lot of steps, and that will never be able to be used by anybody that is in a wheelchair, on crutches, and for the most part, a cane. And the thing about the kids, yeah, kids are kids, and they're going to kind of go whichever way they want to go, regardless of the steps. And I, I, I'll stick with my original position, that the distance added by going around is not so great, that it would involve an imposition to anyone. And as far as getting up to, from the cul-de-sac up to see your neighbors across the street, there again, walking around would not increase the amount of imposition to the neighbors. So, I think that, well, I know, I'm going to, I'll go with giving the subdivision a request for a waiver on those steps.
Art? Another question relative to the existing easement that's not being cleared at this time. Who takes care of it, and who's responsible for that squatch of land, should the waiver be granted?
It would be the property owners on either side.
Just like any other right-of-way that is not used currently, if you're on a corner lot, and there's a right-of-way for utility, and that utility doesn't go in there, and it's grassy area, whatever, you have to maintain that, isn't that correct, Rod?
The adjoining property owners are responsible.
I have a question for Rod as well, as far as that goes, if there's an easement there, and it becomes an orphan path that's used by children, or people, or whatever, there's nothing preventing people from using it as that, as such, is there?
That, the purpose of it was for a public access. Whether it's developed, I'm not sure if that'll make the difference.
So, you know, there's nothing preventing it from being developed further in the future if someone desired to do so, if the property owners desired to do so. And there's nothing preventing it from being used as a, an orphan path for children to make their way down to that cul-de-sac, whether or not there's stairs on it or not. What, correct?
I would just say that the purpose was for a pathway for people to travel through, and if it's not developed, it probably wouldn't look much like a path.
Yeah.
So, and at some point, the, the adjoining property owners may want to come in and ask council to do something.
And that would be an option available to them. Correct.
Okay, everybody has. Gary, did you have a point?
Just going to say, we typically don't encourage citizens to use unimproved paths in the city. It can be dangerous, we don't exclude them typically. It's like using a parkland that isn't fully developed. If the property owners or the subdivider wishes to come in and ask the council to vacate that, so that the adjoining property owners can exercise full dominion over that property, they certainly can do that, they just have not chosen to in this case.
Okay, John?
I would, I would move that we approve the waiver request on the Southgate Third Edition subdivision concerning the air pathway, stairway system connecting the platted Chelsea Court cul-de-sac to the currently undeveloped portion of Castleford Street.
Okay, John made a motion, and Jim made his second, to approve the waiver request as it is outlined in our packet. Question before we start?
Just want to make sure, if I vote no, then I'm saying I want the path.
That's right. That's correct.
Just making sure.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. I'll start the roll with Walter.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
So, we've got a three to three?
Yep.
And I vote yes.
To further waiver request.
So it is granted. Okay, we will move on to item number nine, which is the Sixth Street Right-of-Way Dedication Acceptance, and that will be presented by Les.
Well, earlier this evening, in the consent agenda, there was an item that was included that was a memorandum of agreement between the City of Moscow and the Urban Renewal District, or Agency, I should say, pertaining to a piece of property that the agency owns on the southwest corner of Sixth and Jackson. And within that agreement, it talks about improvements to the Sixth Street corridor and the Jackson intersection, related to realignment of Sixth Street, and then some of the roles and responsibilities of both the city and the agency under that project. One of the things that was in there was the dedication of right-of-way to the City of Moscow. Just to help set the stage a little bit, though, I'm going to walk you through what that agreement touched on, what it addressed, so then you have a little better picture of what this dedication is regarding. So, this to help orient you a bit, Jackson Street, and the concrete going north-south here, and Sixth Street doing the east-west, and this is the parcel of land on that southwest corner of the intersection that belongs to the agency. The configuration of the roadway system out here is kind of what spurred along the discussion resulting in this, ultimately, this dedication this evening. These two red arrows represent the direction of travel on those two lanes. So if you're heading eastbound, like this car, white car right here, you'll see you enter, you approach the intersection pretty much in the center of the street, as you come into the intersection. Whereas if you're heading westbound, this is the left turn pocket that is directly opposite that eastbound direction of travel. That's a very unusual situation, not something we typically like to see, because the potential for conflict, for, for head-on interaction is not a good thing. In this particular case, there are some other movements that also occur within the intersection. One is, there's a right turn pocket here, that then makes this kind of sweeping right turn into the near lane, if you're doing it per code, sometimes further out, if people are heading perhaps to, to Troy, and they want to get into that left-hand lane as they approach the South Couplet. So, but, in theory, they're making a, a turn into this near lane, often we see them going further afield. Then that eastbound lane has to make essentially a full lane width of transition from this point to this point, while crossing the three lanes of Jackson Street, which is a very sharp transition from one point in the roadway off to the right to another point in the roadway. And then what happens often is that bike lane that's right here kind of gets squeezed in the middle. If this guy doesn't make a nice, sharp right turn, this guy's making a fairly quick transition across, because this guy is creeping out into the intersection, waiting to turn left, just a lot of things happening. And unfortunately, the bikes are the ones that kind of get squeezed in that process. And then there's also potential for these two folks to, to interact in their vehicles in, in opposing directions. So not a great situation. I think most people in town that drive around are familiar with it. I think it tends to scare a lot of folks, or if people are careful, but it's something that we just assume remedy if we can. So back about two years or so ago, we started talking about, okay, how can we change this? What can we fix? And at that time, we still had the old aerials, so this is the old auto produce site in here. I think the J.C. Penney catalog drop-off site was here at one time. And then the parking lot, and what is now the Jimmy John's locale here on the north side. So we came up with this concept back then to consider realigning, this was one of two that we developed, but the one we ultimately chose, to realign the eastbound traffic so that we had a nice straight shot across the intersection. And that was accomplished by essentially moving the curb line of the south side of the roadway further south into the URA property. And by doing that, we can widen the road, we can start a nice, long transition from this location in the street over to where then you end up where you should be as you cross the intersection. Avoids a lot of conflict, it also moves the bike lane to the south and the right turn pocket to the south as well. And then the interactions we see, of course, here in the red dash line showing a nice straight transition through the intersection, nice straight shot with the bike lane coming through, and then the right turn is in a much better condition in terms of not interacting with the bikes, and then, again, not having to, to avoid that cross-intersection opposing traffic issue. That's a really awkward sentence, but I think you understand what I'm saying. So, with that, we took that concept a little further back then. This was the drawing that was developed at the time. It showed a, a bit of a transition here, a nice straight lane, and then, and then more of a traditional, you know, transition off to the right, trying to avoid the traffic signal that was located here, this little star indicates, putting in a ten-foot sidewalk, street trees, all those kind of good things. With all of those concepts, it then requires that we need additional space for right-of-way on the south side of the intersection. And that just, again, shows you kind of that, those traffic movements, how those could work under that initial concept a couple of years ago. So here is a representation of where we are today, a little bit closer. This is still actually in design, so we don't actually have construction drawings yet, but you can see it's progressed along, a little prettier picture, if you will, still using the ten-foot sidewalks, street trees, tree grates, things of that nature, coming around to the intersection, the right turn pocket, the bike lane going on through. The skip line represents the transition from travel lane across bike lane into the right turn pocket, and then it does line up a little better as you go across to the east side of the intersection. One of the things that we've talked about as well is the, in working with the agency, was the concept of coming around the corner and maybe doing improvements along their Jackson Street frontage as part of this overall package. In the initial design, we had not figured out what this would look like, we thought maybe this curb line would come out and come down through here, maybe more in keeping with what happened in front of EMSI, with no parking. In discussions with the agency, there's some interest in perhaps providing parking along this stretch of Jackson from Sixth Street on. this stretch of Jackson from Sixth Street on to the south to support the redevelopment of those properties in that district. And so, this is the current concept of coming around and diving back to the west a little bit so that we can accommodate a row of parking right through here. Now, in order to do that, we then need a little additional property from the Agency's parcel in this area to accommodate the 10-foot wide sidewalk. So, with those two parts, we then get to a right-of-way dedication, which is a subject that we're now addressing in this agenda item, which would look something like this. And the red line represents the boundary of what is currently Agency land within this parcel that would then be dedicated to the City of Moscow for right-of-way for Sixth Street and for Jackson Street. That right-of-way dedication would move that property line far enough back that we could then accommodate the improvements, as I was just shown, showing you in the previous slides. And there's a little more of a legalese-type exhibit that would be, that came along with the legal descriptions from the land surveyors. So, it would include this area down to this south property line right here as part of that dedication. So, in your packets this evening is that dedication, deed of dedication document. I just noticed a minute ago before I came up here, what seems to be missing is the exhibit that goes on the back of that dedication document, so we will add that back in. It looks something similar to this, was in the earlier packet, I believe, but for some reason, it's not there, I think, this evening. So, what's before you this evening, then, is in keeping with the memorandum of agreement that was approved on consent agenda earlier this evening, this would be the dedication of right-of-way from the Agency to the City, supporting the improvements.
And this was on Public Works and Finance Committee on January 23rd as well, Jim, so...
Yeah, and the committee unanimously recommended that we accept this public right-of-way, so I guess we can entertain a motion.
There's a question.
Walter wants to...
Just, just to clarify, Les, at one point on a picture, you said, "Look, something like this." And then we have a meets and bounds drawing that you put up that wasn't in the packet, but we do have a proposed deed that's a meets and bounds. We know what it is we're accepting?
Yes, the legal description is included within the packet this evening.
And that is what we're accepting?
That is what we'd be accepting. What, what I think is missing is just the drawing that replicates this legal description.
So, it's not a something like this, it is a specific piece of property?
Walter, what it has, it's got all those Section 18, and then all the different degrees and, you know.
Well, unless it's, unless it's something like this, comment threw me off.
Yeah, it's not this exact drawing or this slide is what I was trying to...
And this actually measures the exact feet and inches, like one of the south, zero, zero degree, forty-five, dash, one, zero W is 153.4 feet, and it's got like half a dozen of these on every kind of angle you can look at it.
Art, just for my own curiosity, on your drawing of the street configuration, where's the traffic light going to be?
The signal pole itself, in this particular version, would be within that little bitty island right there. So, it'd be just behind the sidewalk.
So, it wouldn't have to move necessarily?
No, the intent here was to not have to move that.
And we talked about that, gosh, I don't know how many times, we talked about that pole out there lots of times.
Yeah, one of the early concepts included a free right turn back here, which then would have created this interesting little island out here with the pole in it. That was not favored by the council at that time and the Agency for that matter. So, what we've got here is a configuration that keeps that light pole right where it is today.
John?
I don't know whether this makes any difference, but Art and I are both on the Urban Renewal Agency, and this has been discussed at length by them, and the Urban Renewal Agency is fully in favor of making this switch so that we can make that particular corner a lot more user-friendly than it is now, and it's not going to have much of an effect at all on the value of the lot. And it'll probably make the sale of the lot a little bit easier and the operation of that whole corner a lot better, so I'm in favor of this.
Les, well, this, once this is done, I mean, we've been looking at doing this for quite a while now, is this an accident that will take place, December 2017?
The intent is, as I mentioned earlier, it's in design now, the intent is to put this out to bid this spring to do the Sixth Street frontage.
And hopefully get it done prior to school summer.
Back next fall.
Yeah, I can't say that what exactly the ending date will be, but the intent is to get as much of it done through the summer months as possible.
I have just a quick question, how many parking spaces are you adding?
We are not adding parking spaces.
Did you not say right along the, on Jackson Street?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the timing on this is still a little bit of a question, that's something the Agency will have to work its way through. That will depend a bit on what happens with this driveway. There's discussions going on, you know, with adjacent property owners and the URA about how to access the two parcels, and so we don't really know yet exactly how many spaces will be added. You know, it really, yeah, there's a lot of factors still in play right there.
Spaces added is what I really like to hear.
Yes. And, and the thought with this alignment is that, you know, it would, if you will, set the theme for continuing on to the south all the way to college with additional spaces working our way to the south.
Excellent. I move that we accept the public street right-of-way dedication from the Urban Renewal Agency.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Catherine and a second by Gina to accept the public street right-of-way dedication from the Urban Renewal Agency. I'll start with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you, and we can move forward with that, so...
Hey!
Let's see, I think that brings us to a conclusion, we'll get a chance to read reports. Catherine, I'll let you start first tonight.
All right, I got to go to my first Parks and Rec meeting. It was, it was a long meeting, but it was great. David Schott gave a retrospective PowerPoint with all the things that Parks and Rec accomplished over the year. He had so much, and I always kept encouraging them to come present to us because he really put perspective into how much Parks and Rec accomplished this year. And one of the things that I wanted to point out was, he was super proud of how much training that the staff had worked to get, and fourteen, there were fourteen different categories and a total of thirteen people that had gotten all types of training, everything from CDL to playground safety inspector and even a national locksmith, which was really cool. And then there was quite a discussion about the community garden in terms of making sure that there was good soil there, the one that's over by the HERC, and they're gonna get a truckload of high-quality compost from WSU in the bins for people to use, which I thought was great. And then there's the discussion about the Blackbird Crossing name and the history behind that and what's gonna go forward in that way. But David Schott did an excellent presentation on the year in review, that was excellent. That's it.
Okay, Gina?
It was great.
I was lucky enough to travel to Boise during the week that we had all this great stuff happening at Public Works and Finance down to attend the Association of Idaho Cities meeting, but then also to do a little work in, with my other hat, with our economic development hat, and we had some good meetings down there. I attended my first P-BAC meeting. What a cool group. You should all be jealous you're not on it. It's very exciting. And, and I know, like, one iota of what I need to know, but I'm looking at Les, he walked me through about an hour and a half of history and what I, you know, kind of the, what I'm getting into, and it was really cool. So, I'll have my little fingers dug into that one when we talk about it next year.
It's a certain thing about mixing things up a little bit. Counselors, different look, different flavor.
I will say that I was one of the only woman in the room, but, but it was good, and I actually said something, so it was kind of exciting.
Something tells me you hold up for yourself real well.
I do. I have no trouble with that. I did, I made it a little bit, I won't say better smelling, but anyway. And then I will go to my first Pathways meeting this week as well, so I'll report back next council meeting on what we learned.
John?
Urban Renewal had a meeting last Thursday, and the two things that stand out are, we had the Agency draft on the strategic plan for the capital improvement for the Agency, and essentially what that does is gives us somewhat of a roadmap of where we want to go in the near future and the intermediate future. None of it is, you know, carved in stone, but it'll kind of give us an idea where we want to go, and this will come back before then for final approval. And the next thing was, we started a discussion regarding the potential urban renewal district south of town having to do with the industrial park. And Bill led us through a very informative time, I don't know, half hour, forty-five minutes, and the things that might be possible and the things that we may have to do, and he had even written out a list of about ten different things that needed to happen. I've been on the Urban Renewal since it first started with Gary back when Mayor Paul Agidius put me on it, and we did the first urban renewal project out there southeast of town, and we had no idea what we were doing. And it was all just, let's see if this works, let's see if that works. Since then, the Urban Renewal Agency has had three directors, the latest one being Bill Belknap, and we are now at a point where we have an idea of what we're trying to accomplish and the size of the projects, and between Bill Belknap and Gary, who does our, you're the secretary, I believe, or...
Treasurer.
Treasurer, we have a much better idea, and we are much better prepared to move forward on most any issues, so we're going forward on both of these things, and I'm happy.
If I may, I think what John just said is I'm a better treasurer than I was an executive director.
We'll just go on the jam over here, I'm just all right, Jim, we heard most of the ...
Well, as an executive director, you make a heck of a good treasurer, thank you.
Yeah, everything on Public Works Finance was on the regular agenda or the consent agenda, so I don't have much from that. The only other city-type things, I'm also on the rendezvous in the Park Board, and we now have the lineup for that put together for this year, and it's gonna be pretty exciting, thirty-fifth anniversary. It'll be a big deal, and it'll be in conjunction with the Bicycle Fondo downtown, where there'll be, you know, several hundred people come to town for that, and we'll be cross-merchandising that to promote both those events, so it should be great.
Action in the middle of the summer, Arthur?
Not too much, got the tree commission coming up tomorrow, and Thursday is the Clearwater Economic Development Agency meeting, regular. However, the CETA board did meet to consider a vote on a letter or comments relative to dam breaching, and so a vote was held among the members of the CETA board, which turned out twelve in favor of supporting continuation of the dams, two against, and the rest, or two abstentions, and the rest didn't vote. So, Moscow was one of the abstentions on that one. And so, the letter will go forth.
No against?
The letter will be in support of maintenance of the dams as...
Nobody voted against it?
No. Well, no, nobody voted against it. So, free commission, CETA later on, and other meetings are forthcoming. Nothing's happened other than that in the past couple of weeks.
Okay, Walter?
Since we last met, I missed the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 25 because, like some of the others and Gina, I was down at Boise at the Association of Idaho Cities, where we had breakfast with our legislators, well, most of them, and then in the afternoon, we spent it listening to presentations on upcoming possible legislation and discussions about what the Association of Idaho Cities' position should be regarding those, those items. So, it was, as usual, quite informative. I'm not sure how much impact we had on what they're gonna do, but then again, a lot of the time they were telling us, they didn't know what they were gonna do. The only other thing that I've done related to the city was accept an invite on the second over to Morton Street, 306 East Morton, to see the Moscow Affordable Housing Group's new for-sale home. It is a two-bedroom, slightly over 1,000 square foot home for $165,000. You must meet certain income levels in order to qualify, that is, you have, your income cannot be more than, which is a little different from the real world.
Yep.
And it's quite a good-looking, well-built facility, and I would suggest anyone that would like to take a look at it, get ahold of Nils Peterson, and I bet he'll loan you the key. So, with that, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Walter. As with a bunch of us that were down at AIC in Boise, I also had an AIC board meeting because I was, I'm on District Two, I'm one of the two representatives for that district, and we talked about a bunch of these different legislative House bills. I was also on a conference call this past Friday, listening to six different House bills, and one of them, of course, that were, they're very interesting, is a forgone property tax one that we're talking about that's coming up for a vote, and we, you know, the House Bill 76 on immigration enforcement, gosh, who knows how that, the direction of that, how it's gonna go, it's gonna be really interesting, but I'll be on another conference call this Friday again to see what kind of legislation stuff's coming in front of us. You know, we had an earlier comment in our, from one of our folks that talked to us, and absolutely correct, it's what we do for ourselves in the communities, it's gonna count, we've gotta count on ourselves to pull ourselves forward, because in all reality, nobody else is gonna do that for us, and so that's why it's so important that we work together on so many, many things. I was on a airport board meeting on the 31st, and kind of an interesting thing, I brought some, some numbers for you guys to hear. Last year, passengers, passengers, 122,094 for the year, 2016, that's over 10,000 a month. Think about that, and that was a 24.08% increase year-over-year from the previous year, and this thing has been clipping along, it's amazing. And that does not include charter flights, which is estimated that there was 2,000 of those. So, think about that, that's a huge thing for us, and I'll get that exact number next month. Now...
2,000 flights or 2,000 people?
Charters.
Well... 2,000 people on planes?
Yes, yes.
2,000, not 2,000 aircraft?
No, no, not 2,000 charters, I said that wrong. 2,000 people on charters, and I'll have an exact number on that, Jim, so that 2,000, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that, yeah, that would, that would be a misstatement, I said that wrong. But one thing I will say, for December and January, our cancellations at the airport was 27, and I actually thought that was pretty good, considering...
Considering two of them.
Well, Arthur, you're just a jet setter all the time, and this is what happened to you when you got like that. But you gotta think about this, I mean, there was a lot of airport closures, whether it be Lewiston, Spokane, Portland, Medford, Seattle, so it wasn't that we were unusual for what happened. Anyway, with that, Gary, do you have anything you want to report?
The only thing I wanted to comment on was, we did have our monthly breakfast meeting like last Wednesday. Thursday, I had the honor with the mayor and council member Trucio to attend the IREC opening, grand opening at the University of Idaho, $53 million building, Integrated Research and Innovation Center. So, listened to President Staben and some notables there, looks like a great addition to the University of Idaho.
Yeah, it is.
If I may, your comments about conference calls?
I have one with the AIC Municipal Water Committee this Friday, that's the new group that I'm a member of, which will be discussing potential future legislation to protect municipal water use for domestic use. This has to primarily do with water calls down in southeast Idaho, where some of the communities have been concerned that they will be subject to a call and restrict their water use down there. We believe that it has implications for the entire state, so I will be on that conference call on Friday afternoon.
I doubt I would entertain a motion to adjourn, so move. Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, 8:29, thank you, everybody.